Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer and I'd like to welcome you to the June 17th, 2013 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. And we are going to begin today's proceedings with an invocation offered by Bill Sublett, Chairman of the Orange County School Board. Bill brought along his own introduction, which is only three sentences long. I'm going to, well, I'm going to choose to use my version, which is three paragraphs long. So I just wanted you to know it wasn't Bill who provided this lengthy introduction, but I think he deserves it. So he's also the past president of the Orange County Bar Association, which is a 31-member voluntary association and is recognized nationally as one of the best bar associations in the entire country. Bill is an attorney with a sublet law offices practicing in the areas of personal injury and commercial litigation. He earned his law and bachelor's degrees from the University of Florida, Go Gators, and moved to Orlando in 1988 and 1992. He won a seat in the House of Representatives where I had the pleasure of serving with him during the course of the next eight years. Bill has been an outstanding public servant for our community. He has served in so many numerous leadership positions, including Chairman of the Orange County Jail Oversight Committee, WMFE, the American Cancer Society, and the Central Florida Council of Boy Scouts of America. And in 2003, at my request, Bill served as the Chair of the Mayor's Education Action Council. And he did such great work there that when we convened a Blue Ribbon Commission on Education that was a joint venture between the city, the county, and the school district, we jointly asked Bill to chair that as well. And finally, in 2010, he became Florida's first countywide elected Chair of a local school board here in Orange County. And what he had as the final sentence in his own introduction was that he's a parent himself with three children in Orange County Public Schools, which may be the most important part of it. So please welcome Bill Sublett for the invocation. And that will be followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Stewart. If everyone could please...
Well, Mayor, first of all, I want to thank you and the City Council for inviting me to do the invocation today. It's quite an honor and I want to recognize and thank also this City Council for your partnership with Orange County Public Schools. We have a wonderful working relationship, thanks in no small measure to Mayor Dyer and his efforts, but also this entire Council, so thank you. I thought what I would do this morning is rather than write my own prayer, I thought I would share with you a prayer that I read years ago in a biography of Harry S. Truman. Harry S. Truman is one of my heroes. I think he's one of the great presidents of the 21st century. And those who are members of the Bar Association know that I love historical prayers. It's a tradition I started at the Bar Association. This prayer is so special to me and it struck such a chord with me and my beliefs that I actually carry this prayer in my wallet and have carried it for years and years. So if you could please, please bow your head and join me in prayer. "O Almighty and Everlasting God, Creator of Heaven, Earth, and the Universe, help me to be, to think, to act what is right because it is right. Make me truthful, honest, and honorable in all things. Make me intellectually honest for the sake of right and honor and without thought of reward to me. Give me the ability to be charitable, forgiving, and patient with my fellow men. Help me to understand their motives and their shortcomings even as Thou understandest mine. Amen. Amen. Amen."
Thank you, Bill. Let's call the meeting over to Madam Clerk. Would you call the oral, make a determination of a quorum, please?
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Orsby.
Here.
Mr. Stewart.
Here.
Mr. Sheehan.
Here.
Mr. Lyne.
Here.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
There you go.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and if everyone would silence their devices. All right, let's take up for consideration the minutes from the workshop agenda review and City Council meeting of June the 22nd. Is that motion by Commissioner Ayers, second by Commissioner Stewart? On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Lisa, you are first up in presentations.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer and Commissioners. Thank you so much. I have the honor today of introducing some special guests because we, this week, are celebrating the 40th anniversary of the Edith Bush Charitable Foundation. And I have had the personal honor of knowing the President of the Edith Bush Foundation for probably all, if not most, of the 23 years that he has been here in Orlando, and that is David Odehowsky. And over those many years, it has been a privilege for me to work alongside David as the Edith Bush Charitable Foundation has made amazing investments in things that are so important to this community, ranging from children's services to the arts, to programs that benefit our community's green space and parks. So it is a privilege to introduce David Odehowsky, President of the Edith Bush Charitable Foundation, to speak. David.
Thank you, Lisa. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. On behalf of Jerry Hilbrick, Chairman of the Board of the Edith Bush Charitable Foundation, and all of our Board members, past and present, we're delighted to receive this recognition today. I am joined today by Mr. Rick Walsh, one of our Board members. It's been said that apart from the ballot box, apart from the franchise of voting, that philanthropy represents the single most best way for an individual to make a choice about the future, a better future for their community. And so when people are donating their dollars or they're volunteering, they're making a choice for a better, better community. For 40 years, the Edith Bush Charitable Foundation has sought to create innovative civic solutions, helping people help themselves, and that's all about a better, better future. And that better future may be as large as the Dr. Phillips Orlando Performing Arts Center. It might be as intimate as the Edith Bush Theater nestled in Lock Haven Park, or it might just be a Boy Scout Eagle Scout project on Mercy Drive. But it's all about a better choice for our future. It's the same kind of work that you undertake on behalf of the citizens of Orlando through your work, and together we create a better future for our residents. Thank you.
Mayor, can you read the proclamation, please?
Yes, ma'am. "Whereas the Edith Bush Charitable Foundation was founded in Winter Park on June the 22nd, 1973, to continue and enhance the philanthropic interest in perpetuity of Edith Basler Bush, a playwright, an actress, and a dancer from St. Paul, Minnesota, who fell in love with Central Florida. And whereas Edith Bush Charitable Foundation since its inception has granted more than $100 million in grants with the mission of helping people help themselves. And whereas the city of Orlando has greatly benefited from the foundation's philanthropic investments in the Orlando Rep Theater, housing the highly acclaimed Edith Bush Theater, the Christian Service Center, Orlando Science Center, Orlando Shakesville Festival, Orlando Philip Harmonic Orchestra, Paramore Kids Zone, Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Center, and many other organizations and initiatives in our city. And whereas private philanthropy and voluntary action is a unique American value, and residents of the city of Orlando, like Edith Basler Bush, are well-known for their generosity and volunteers in making the city of Orlando the city beautiful and the city bountiful. And whereas the Edith Bush Charitable Foundation celebrates its 40th year of creating innovative civic solutions, helping people help themselves, now therefore we, Mayor Buddy Dyer, Jim Gray, District 1, Tony Ortiz, District 2, Robert Stewart, District 3, Patty Sheehan, District 4, Daisy W. Linum, District 5, and Samuel B. Ayers, District 6, Orlando City Commissioners on behalf of the citizens of this community, hereby do proclaim June 22nd, 2013, as Edith Bush Charitable Foundation Day in the city of Orlando and encourage all residents to involve themselves in charitable acts using their time, talent, and other resources benefiting a philanthropic cause near and dear to their hearts." Okay, next up are two 25-year service awards, and I'm going to call on F.J. Flynn, our Deputy Director of Economic Development, to recognize the first 20-year service award.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, today we celebrate Gus Castro's 25 years at the city. Gus has been with us since 1988, where he came aboard as the city's first transportation modeler and came in as a planner one. And so since then, Gus has transitioned into project management. And just kind of reading through all his accomplishments, he's been kind of one of the responsible creators for the city's first transportation element, which is within the Growth Management Plan. The city's first bicycle plan was integral in doing all the traffic modeling and simulation for the Naval Training Center Rehabilitation, which is now Baldwin Park, as well as the Southeast Orlando Sector Plan. And one of the things that I also find is that whenever there is the thought of kind of changing the region's transportation model over at Metro Plan or other organizations, Gus is usually the first person that's consulted with because he's kind of been there, been at the forefront from day one and kind of knows the history. And one of the other things that, over 25 years, you tend to accumulate a lot of stuff. And so when I'm sitting around with staff trying to figure out, well, what was the intent of a certain policy ordinance that dates back to the late 80s or even the early 90s, if I give Gus maybe 10 or 15 minutes, he can probably produce a draft copy of one of the original pieces of work. Gus holds a master's degree in urban and regional planning from Cima Belivar University in Venezuela. He's taught transportation planning at Rollins College, and to many people, he is the face of transportation when people are dealing with the city of Orlando. Joining us today are Gus's wife of 25 years, Mary, and we're honoring him as a great part of the city of Orlando. So we congratulate him on his 25 years and hope to see him for another, does that say 25 more? So Mayor, without further ado, step forward, Gus, and we'll take some pictures.
So I asked Gus if he wanted to say anything, and he said no, but I love Orlando. All right, Rebecca, you are next up for a 25-year service award.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for John Cole. John, will you come up with David Dunn, our Division Manager for Fleet and Facilities? John Cole was hired by the city of Orlando in May of 1988, and he is completing his 25 years of service with the city of Orlando. He began as a mechanic 2 for fleet management, and using his strengths and aspirations, John worked his way up to his current position of mechanic 4 while earning numerous team merit awards along the way. John constantly strives to improve his skills by educating himself on new technologies for heavy truck repairs. He attends numerous training courses and maintains the following ASE certification: heating and air conditioning, brakes, suspension and steering, and PM inspections. And all of that just frankly gives me a headache. I'm glad he's here. Prior to joining the city of Orlando's fleet management team, John Cole was a Vietnam-era veteran serving in the United States Army from 1972 to 1975, and that alone deserves a round of applause. I think that, you know, there are a lot of opinion, there's a lot of opinion out there about how investrious or not our city employees are. But my experience has been that they attack their jobs every day with extraordinary caring. And I just have one example that I think is somewhat humorous, but probably more indicative of John's dedication, not only to his job, but also just to his integrity as a person. Shortly after David took over leadership of the fleet operation, John faced a conundrum one day while working on a solid waste truck. John had the blade compartment open and a crow had gotten into the compartment area only to become covered in water and debris. The crow could not fly out, and John could not draw the blade back to service it without the possibility of the crow being crushed. John's peers told him that the crow would probably move when he initiated the blade, but John was skeptical. David Dunn happened by about this time and inquired as to the conundrum, only to be filled in by John. David investigated the issue, climbed up on the work stand to get a firsthand look at the problem. David asked John to hand him a broom handle, and after several tries, David was able to get the crow to step from the blade compartment interior onto the broom handle. David gingerly drew the handle from the truck and handed it to John so that John could set the crow carefully on the ground. The crow walked the corner of the H Building and spread its wings to dry, and John and David went back to work. It probably seems like a small thing to us, but the crow was probably undoubtedly happy to be free and alive. So I guess that just shows you just how dedicated our employees really are and that they're not going about their business in an automated fashion, but rather with care and with concern and with complete integrity. So today I want to congratulate John on his 25 years and present to him his watch, his pen, and also his certificate of appreciation. John's wife Paula is with us, and we'd like to call her up for pictures.
Now I'm going to call on Mike Rhodes for a retirement award.
Mayor and Commissioners, this afternoon, we recognized Teresa Watson upon her retirement after 33 years of service to the city of Orlando. Teresa was born in New Bern, North Carolina, and was raised in Brooklyn, New York, making her transition to Orlando in 1979 pretty easy, comparatively speaking. She came to Orlando in 1979, and in May of 1980, with Carl Langford as our mayor, she began working as what was at the time called an occupational license tax collector for the city of Orlando. Teresa worked for 17 years down on the first floor of City Hall, right? First floor of City Hall, processing applications for business licenses, and actually going out in the field to find the folks that maybe couldn't get their license application submitted on time. In 1998, the occupational license tax collectors had their positions reclassified, and like so many other things in government, you know, there were some changes, and Teresa found herself in a new role in 1998 as a code enforcement officer where she's served for the last 16 years. Over the course of her career, there are not too many corners of the city where Teresa hasn't worked, and some of her best work over the last few years in particular has been the Isle of Catalina, and the condominium communities in the southwest part of the city. I'm going to tell a quick story about Teresa because it was early on in her career over in the Lake Sunset neighborhood, and I got called out along with the police because Teresa and a landlord were not getting along real well. And Teresa was there because she had had some complaints from the tenants, and there was a lot of noise, back and forth, talking, negotiating, if you will, about the things that needed to be repaired. But I can tell you that Teresa, at that time, I learned, had very, very strong convictions, and it didn't matter whether or not it was in the code necessarily, what was right was right. And Teresa was determined that those tenants were going to see the repairs in their apartment made. And it was all done, we all walked away pretty happy, including the landlord, believe it or not, who was able to resolve these issues without fines and with a thorough understanding of what was right, thanks to Teresa. Teresa is loved and respected by her coworkers, many of whom are here today to wish her well. I noticed the mayor sweating a little bit because Gus's cohorts all came up, so hopefully Teresa's cohorts will get to come up as well for pictures. But Mayor Dyer and Commissioners, it's my privilege to present to you Teresa Watson.
So I have a proclamation to Teresa Watson. The city of Orlando is proud of the service rendered by its employees who have contributed in no small measure to the enhancement of the city beautiful as one of the most progressive cities in the nation. Progress in municipal government is predicated, for the greatest part, upon the loyalty and efficiency of the employees and on their ability to carry out their duties in the highest tradition of public service. On the occasion of your retirement from the employ of the city of Orlando, after 33 years of service, the Orlando City Council wishes to express its esteem of the sterling qualities manifested in your devotion and loyalty to the city of Orlando. Now therefore, I proclaim grateful appreciation of your long and honorable record of faithful service for the city of Orlando and extend best wishes for good health and happiness. Dated this 28th day of June, 2013, Buddy Dyer, Mayor. Okay, let's move right into the mayor's update. I hope all the fathers out there enjoyed their special day yesterday, and I want to thank all of the fathers in our community for their involvement and commitment and dedication to their children. Last week, we had something unique in the history of Orlando. Four of your male city commissioners were spotted in high-heel shoes between the courthouse and the Orange County, our Orange County History Center, and fortunately, it's for a very good cause. We're bringing greater awareness to the issue of domestic abuse in our community and to benefit Harbor House. So the police chief, although he did not don his shoes, and my chief of staff, Frank Billingsley, were also participating in the Walk a Mile in Their Shoes event, and it kicked off, well, mostly men, and a few were sporting sportier shoes than all of us, but I think Commissioner Gray probably gets the award among the city commissioners for most interestingly...
Bragging rights. Bragging rights.
And I will tell you, ladies, walking in those high heels, I now understand the challenge. The standing part, the program was about 30 minutes long, and the standing part was the most difficult aspect. The walking part was not so bad. I see all the ladies out there nodding their heads. So that's going to become an annual event, and I'm sure as the years grow that there's going to be even larger participation. I want to invite everybody on Thursday, July 4th, to Lake Yola Park for fireworks at the fountain. We'll have a patriotic celebration beginning at 4 o'clock that has live music on two different stages, the 98.9 WMMO Acoustic Cafe, the Orlando Concert Band, National Recording Artist Joel Kraus, a play area for kids, food and beverages. We'll have a light show before the fireworks and a spectacular 20-minute fireworks display beginning at 9:10. So if you need more information, go to cityorlando.net. So Lisa Early is touting Lake Yola Park, and on that date, we're going to have 100,000-plus people for fireworks at the park. And what's significant about that is the Coca-Cola America Is Your Park campaign is underway, which focuses on getting people to vote for their favorite park. And the park with the most votes wins $100,000. Second place gets $50,000, third place $25,000. Right now, we're in the top 20 out of, what, thousands? Thousands. So I would encourage everybody to go to the website coke.com/parks, coke.com/parks, and vote for Lake Yola, and you can vote every day, three different ways. So spread the word and come out on July 4th, and we can rack up some votes on July 4th. This week is National Small Business Week. You'll probably see posters hanging in many of the small businesses that are a local backbone of our local economy. It's also the 10-year celebration of the National Entrepreneur Center. Later this week, we'll have a celebration there tomorrow. And then on the agenda, I have a couple items that I would like to note. I'm a College Park resident, as is Commissioner Stewart.
It's always no good to see Dina and Mr. Dina. Let me say thank you for your commitment, but also let me reiterate what's the transportation impact fees. I guess probably two or three meetings ago, we approved this transit-oriented development impact fee. This is our first chance to actually use it and it's really thrilled about the fact that it's going to make us, it's good for our community when we get people to use transportation, it's good for the greening of our community. I appreciate that. Also want to mention, D1 on our agenda today is an agreement with the Orlando Museum of Art for Miriam's Garden, Jim Kersey's wife, they were doing a garden in her memory, a wonderful asset to our community she was and appreciate that so much and it's just a real nice way to honor her and honor her memory and I'm honored to endorse that. Let me mention a couple of things in the community. Thank you, Mayor. I mentioned the National Entrepreneur Center and the 10th anniversary tomorrow. This past weekend, I had a chance to celebrate some of our small businesses in the community. One is Cabin Tree Creations over in Hyphen Hill Village, celebrating their 10th anniversary. And then tomorrow evening, I think, maybe it's this evening, the Vascular Vein Center will be celebrating their 12th anniversary over on Edgewater Drive, so we're thrilled about that again. I think small business is a backbone of our community, so. A couple of other quick things, the College Park Freedom and the Winter Park Diamond Dogs are hosting their inaugural golf challenge this coming Saturday, June 22nd. It's a 1:00 PM shotgun start and followed by dinner and then the baseball game between the Florida, the College Park Freedom and Winter Park Diamond Dogs and Florida Collegiate Baseball League. So, get a chance to come, please come. The College Park Partnership is one of the main sponsors of that this weekend. We have a great program going on at Lake Fairview. OPD has teamed up with some of our city's youth as part of the Cops and Kids Dragon Boat Team. They have begun practicing and they're looking to raise some money to take a team up to Toronto, so we're excited about that for the Great White North Dragon Boat Challenge. So, they have a fundraiser coming up on June 26th. You want to visit the website and contribute, it's called paddletotoronto.com. Also want to mention one other thing, National Night Out is coming up on August 6th, but on August 1st, we'll be doing it, 1st, we'll be doing a special event for District 3 at the Gaston Edwards Park. It'll be from 6:00 to 8:30, you'll get a chance to come, be part of the entire community. It's a chance to have free food and kids area, a chance to talk to vendors about how to make your community safer and a chance to recruit more people involved in neighborhood watch, one of the most important things that we do in terms of communicating to the community. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner, we'll move to District 4. Commissioner Sheehan.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Over the weekend, I went over to Beefy King to celebrate their 45 years in business. So, they were, they had four generations of the family there and then passed that business from generation to generation, it was just a pleasure and they were very pleased to have it declared Beefy King Day in the City of Orlando, so that was, they were very, very happy for that. On a sadder note, the handsome gentleman to my left standing over here in the police uniform, Master Officer, Master Police Officer Evan Cantrell has been with me for many, many years. I think you're the longest staff member that's ever put up with me, Evan. He's going to be leaving me to go to the State's Attorney's Office. Evan has done an amazing job. He is the quintessential public servant. He gets out in the neighborhoods, he does what he's supposed to be doing in terms of helping people. Whenever we have a break-in in District 4, Evan goes and visits that person personally. He does crime stats for every single neighborhood, works with these folks. He is the consummate professional and I want to thank Officer Evan Cantrell for his many, many years of service with me. Thank you very much, Evan. He got a plaque the last time he was with me, so he's not going to get another one, but anyway, I just want to thank you so much, man. You're the best and wish you the best with your new career at the State's Attorney's Office. So, they're, my loss is their gain. On the Urban Chicken Pilot Program, I'm sorry, but all 75 slots are full now, so apparently that's very popular and hopefully we can get that citywide because there's a lot of good folks doing this wonderful program, but again, it's all full after we just extended that to 50 more households, so it's a very, very popular program. I too wanted to congratulate the men in my life on this council for walking a mile in high heels for...
Ed, could you run that video?
That's, Ed. And I just want to point out that the mayor is wearing the sexiest red high heels, I'm just saying. He wasn't wearing platforms, he was wearing, were those Christian libitans?
Thank you, Alex Fox.
You have film? Awesome.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is time to walk a mile in her shoes. Let's go! And whereas the City of Orlando recognizes this walk as an effort to bring awareness to the issue of domestic abuse in our community benefiting Harbor House, now therefore, I am going to be our mayor of the City of Orlando, here by Placating, Thursday, June 13, 2013, as Walk a Mile in Her Shoes Orlando.
Commissioner Boyd and Commissioner Clark from the county.
They had stilettos on, it was awesome, so anyway, how apropos that that would be in the District 4 comments, because a lot of you went to Ritzy Rags to buy your shoes, so thank you so much for participating. And $19,000 for spouse abuse and domestic violence, that's a wonderful cause and thank you, gentlemen, I think you were, I think you're awesome. Tonight, and we're talking about philanthropy today, and tonight I am having my first Bad Kitty art show to benefit the SPCA, so 7 o'clock tonight at the Peacock Room, so if you want to come by and see some Bad Kitties and buy some art and enjoy some fellowship and make a donation of cat food to the SPCA, we certainly would enjoy that. And I can't say enough nice things about the SPCA. I lost a lot of my animals unfortunately in a bitter divorce and I was very lonely and broke and they really helped me out a lot. I adopted a little kitty and they helped me fix her when I could least afford to and they are, and I actually got to experience, because I couldn't afford to take my kitty to the vet, all the families that are in hardship and had, that used those facilities and they are just the most remarkable people, they give the best care, just like if you're going to a full-price vet, they do such great work and I'm glad I was in a situation to have to utilize that, to see that for myself and understand what a great job the Humane Society of Southern Florida does. So if you have a chance to come out tonight, make a donation, I'd sure appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
And we'll move to District 5. Commissioner Lannan.
You know, I thought I had sore feet from time to time, but yours were really sore. But that walk, you know, that little, I've been there, I kind of feel your pain about that.
Well, I also figured out why those cobblestones and brick streets are...
Are hard on my boots. They would tear up your good shoes, too. Good for cars and slowing us down, but congratulations on that. And Commissioner Sheehan is talking about PSCA and it really did me a great favor, but Commissioner, if I'd known you wanted some cats that badly, you could have been over in my backyard catching those cats with PSCA that were back there. They said, "My backyard is perfect, it's peaceful and quiet and that's why I have so many cats back there." But they helped me remove quite a few, but I could have brought them right down to your house. But on a more serious note, I want to congratulate Teresa Watson. She's from New Bern, North Carolina and you know, that's that movie, was it Letter in a Bottle, A Note in a Bottle? Wonderful little romantic story was made there, it's a beautiful, beautiful town in North Carolina, but congratulations on her retirement after 33 years. Just a few congratulations and thank yous and kudos. This past week, I had the great honor again of hosting a meeting regarding the Citrus Bowl neighborhood. Everything is pointing toward the Citrus Bowl and there I was able to bring the whole neighborhood together over at First Baptist, oh gosh, St. John the Baptist with Reverend Wallace Frazier, who's one of my great partners. And the staff know who they are, but I've just got to call out some of them. We'd already met with all the businesses the past few months around the Citrus Bowl, leading up to the Citrus Bowl, and then we met with all the neighbors, all the residents, well, all the property owners. And it was a great meeting, thanks to Gennaro, I saw him here earlier. Gennaro helped partner with me, he and his staff went out and hand-delivered those flyers. Remember, we walked the neighborhood in his almost tuxedo? I hadn't planned on walking that deep, I forgot it. And they later went out, we hand-delivered all of the flyers and invitations. And Walter Hawkins has been, there he is, has been the ambassador, the, as you call it, consummate. He is the ambassador that's making all of this happen. We have partnered with the, I call them my yaya girls, Ray Byrne and I call it Goosey Goose, but it's Joe DeBaius. Laurie Botts was there, Susan Harris, Kim King, all of these guys, who else am I missing? Or Henry and Philip from Howson, just to share with the residents everything that we can do to bring them to where they want to be. And of course, the doctorate of all of us to calm everybody down was Charles Remden. When everything can go wrong, you've got Charles. Then our great engineer Steve, is it Weisenberg, was there to talk about the improvements along Church Street. When you've got these kind of venues that are moving forward affecting folks' neighborhoods, we have to meet with them. And I believe Gennaro, we will be meeting with the contractor in the next few months regarding subcontracts. We've got a lot going on and in District 5, we always have our meetings to make sure the residents know who show up, who show up. So, I want to say real special things to all of the staff and even those I may not have called, it was just a great time. But I have to say kudos to Dr. Angela Adams. This is the 17th year we have supported the Black Men's Health Summit. Reginald McGill was our presiding person this time, but Dr. Abraham Woods is the greatest urologist, he and Dr. Robinson. I know for a fact the lives that have been changed and saved through that program. I may have missed one, maybe two, in 17 years. When you have an opportunity to go around 2,000 men at one time, Mayor, I've seen you there, and you're about one of 10 women, oh, you're going to go. I go every year to the Black Men's Health Summit and love doing the presentations of our proclamation. But I know here duly, one of our own city staff before he retired, life was saved as he was diagnosed with cancer. So, this is the right thing to do in this community. I also want to congratulate Gamma Phi Delta for celebrating Father's Day by sin, giving a Gamma guy celebration night at a very small business, so we did two things at one time in the heart of Paramore. So, a real special thanks for all of those, but if I miss any city staff we're working with, I know Rebecca met with me earlier, we're working on some other things we're going to do with Jane Rahill and Joe DeBaius and all the neighborhoods in the community we've been working on for a long time. And Pastor Glanny, we are working on your situation. I've got a cost of those cameras from the chief. I've got to get a, borrow a few dollars from the mayor, I've already talked to Byron and the chief and maybe I can come up with a few. I think we'll be able to do something that's coming down the pike with the cameras. Now for the agenda items, there are a few things on the council meeting, but today is a pretty good day. There's a lot of good stuff, but it's nothing that spectacular. But I do want to say a special thanks to Macedonia Baptist Church, that's Byron's Church. They were first place in the Let's Move video challenge and I like the idea. I'm a walker, I walk all the neighborhoods in District 5, I have been for 15 years. I'll start walking before then. But Mayor, that Active Living Committee is moving forward and I am very, very happy to see that happen. On agenda item B8, we've got Planned Parenthood under MPB and we've got the Paramore BRT, the Paramore Rapid Transit that's moving forward. So, there are other things on District 5, but those are the ones that sort of stand out and unique, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner, we'll move to District 6. Commissioner Ringes.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to say congratulations to Gus Castro as well as John Cole for your 25 years of service each, and then of course Teresa Watson, whose work's so fateful in District 6 and actually throughout the city in code enforcement. So, you guys, it'll be congratulated, we really do appreciate all of the hard work that you do. And then of course, a happy belated Father's Day to all of the fathers that are here and that are listening. Truly, you do make a difference in our communities and in the lives of our children and our families. I participated in the commencement exercises for Jones High School, class of 2013 at the Amway Center on Wednesday, June 5th at 3:00 PM and Principal Valeria Maxwell was on hand to introduce her class and her group of seniors that were graduating. School Board Member Cat Gordon was on hand as well as School Board Chair Bill Sablett and Dr. Kathy Pope, the area superintendent for Orange County Public Schools. I also attended the commencement ceremony 2013 for Fortis College Winter Park. It was held at the Holy Trinity Greek Orthodox Church in Maitland, Florida on Thursday, June 6th at 4:00 PM. As a matter of fact, I was the commencement address speaker, so I delivered the commencement address for the class of 2013 for Fortis College, whose motto is "Your Life Powered by Learning." And it was a great ceremony, over 175 graduates there. Ray Nanziata is the president of the college and Ms. Keisha Whitaker, the financial aid director, was the emcee and I was invited to be the guest speaker by Judith Hendrickson, an instructor there at Fortis College. And then on Thursday, June 13th, we celebrated with our seniors at the L. Claudia Allen Center, our male seniors, in celebration of Father's Day luncheon that was held at the Golden Corral on West Colonial Drive. Thank you to the Omega Psi Phi fraternity, Chi Tau chapter, for sponsoring this event for all of our seniors. Reginald McGill, I saw your uncle there, Michelle McGill's dad, and he's looking great and doing very well. And Greg Richardson is the chapter president for the Omega Psi Phi fraternity Chi Tau chapter, so it was a great, great event. And my father was there with us too, so it was a great event. And then also on June 14th, I attended along with Mayor Dyer and thank you Frank Billingsley... And I believe, Gennaro, we will be meeting with the contractor in the next few months regarding subcontracts. We've got a lot going on, and in District Five, we always have our meetings to make sure the residents know who show up. Who show up. So I want to say real special things to all of the staff, and even those I may not have called. It was just a great time. But I have to say kudos to Dr. Angela Adams. This is the 17th year we have supported the Black Men's Health Summit. Reginald McGill was our presiding person this time, but Dr. Abraham Woods is the greatest urologist, he and Dr. Robinson. I know for a fact the lives that have been changed and saved through that program. I may have missed one, maybe two, in 17 years. When you have an opportunity to go around 2,000 men at one time, Mayor, I've seen you there, and you're about one of 10 women, oh, you're gonna go. I go every year to the Black Men's Health Summit and love doing the presentations of our proclamation. But I know here duly, one of our own city staff, before he retired, life was saved as he was diagnosed with cancer. So this is the right thing to do in this community. I also want to congratulate Gamma Phi Delta for celebrating Father's Day by sin, giving a Gamma Guy Celebration Night at a very small business. So we did two things at one time in the heart of Paramore. So a real special thanks for all of those. But if I miss any city staff we're working with, I know Rebecca met with me earlier, we're working on some other things we're gonna do with Jane Rahill, and Joe Tobias, and all the neighborhoods in the community we've been working on for a long time. And Pastor Glenny, we are working on your situation. I've got a cost of those cameras from the chief. I've got to get a bar, a few dollars from the mayor. I've already talked to Byron and the chief, and maybe I can come up with a few. I think we'll be able to do something that's coming down the pike with the cameras. Now, for the agenda items, there are a few things on the council meeting, but today is a pretty good day. There's a lot of good stuff, but it's nothing that spectacular. But I do want to say a special thanks to Macedonia Baptist Church, that's Byron's Church. They were first place in the Let's Move video challenge, and I like the idea. I'm a walker, I walk all the neighborhoods in District Five. I have been for 15 years. I'll start walking before then. But Mayor, that Active Living Committee is moving forward, and I am very, very happy to see that happen. On agenda item B8, we've got Planned Parenthood under MPB, and we've got the Paramore BRT, the Paramore Rapid Transit that's moving forward. So there are other things on District Five, but those are the ones that sort of stand out and unique, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Six. Commissioner Ringes.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to say congratulations to Gus Castro, as well as John Cole for your 25 years of service each, and then, of course, Teresa Watson, whose work's so fateful in District Six and actually throughout the city in code enforcement. So you guys, it'll be congratulated. We really do appreciate all of the hard work that you do. And then, of course, a happy belated Father's Day to all of the fathers that are here and that are listening. Truly, you do make a difference in our communities and in the lives of our children and our families. I participated in the commencement exercises for Jones High School, class of 2013, at the Amway Center on Wednesday, June 5th, at 3:00 PM. And Principal Valeria Maxwell was on hand to introduce her class and her group of seniors that were graduating. School Board member Kat Gordon was on hand, as well as School Board Chair Bill Sablett, and Dr. Kathy Pope, the area superintendent for Orange County Public Schools. I also attended the commencement ceremony 2013 for Fortis College, Winter Park. It was held at the Holy Trinity Greek Orthodox Church in Maitland, Florida on Thursday, June 6th, at 4:00 PM. As a matter of fact, I was the commencement address speaker, so I delivered the commencement address for the class of 2013 for Fortis College, whose motto is "Your Life Powered by Learning." And it was a great ceremony, over 175 graduates there. Ray Nanziata is the president of the college, and Ms. Keisha Whitaker, the financial aid director, was the emcee. And I was invited to be the guest speaker by Judith Hendrickson, an instructor there at Fortis College. And then, on Thursday, June 13th, we celebrated with our seniors at the L. Claudia Allen Center, our male seniors, in celebration of Father's Day luncheon that was held at the Golden Corral on West Colonial Drive. Thank you to the Omega Psi Phi fraternity, Chi Tau chapter, for sponsoring this event for all of our seniors. Reginald McGill, I saw your uncle there, Michelle McGill's dad, and he's looking great and doing very well. And Greg Richardson is the chapter president for the Omega Psi Phi fraternity Chi Tau chapter, so it was a great, great event. And my father was there with us, too, so it was a great event. And then, also, on June 14th, I attended, along with Mayor Dyer, and thank you Frank Billingsley, if you are in the House, thank you for switching seats with me. That's kind of an inside joke, he'll understand. Orange County Mayor Teresa Jacobs, this was her county address, great event. It was held at Full Sail University, there at Full Sail Live Interactive Auditorium, great facility, great parking, everything was just great, a wonderful presentation by Mayor Jacobs. And the Black Men's Health and Wellness Expo Health Summit that was held in Orlando, great event, and it's always a pleasure, as Commissioner Linum had said, in seeing our black men there, looking to get some help from a health perspective. And this year also, too, you had the young black men that were there, too. So you had the adults and the young ones that were also receiving services. And Dr. Angela Adams is to be commended for a great job that she did. And again, Reginald McGill did an outstanding job as emcee for that program. And then, this Saturday, June 15th, I hosted my Fourth Annual Juneteenth Celebration Community Event Honoring Our History. And Juneteenth is known also as Freedom Day or Emancipation Day. It's an annual holiday that's celebrated in the month of June in the United States to commemorate the ending of slavery. And June 19th, 1865, is when the people in Texas, the slaves in Texas, were made aware that in 1863, President Abraham Lincoln had issued the Emancipation Proclamation, and that slavery had been abolished in the United States, but like, two years later, they just found out. So we celebrate each year, and Freddie Moore, who is a Raffman member, he was the guest speaker, and he spoke on a historical event commonly referred to as the Werrith 11. And this was a group of black GIs from the 333rd Field Artillery Battalion that took their unit, and it was overrun by the Germans at the start of the Battle of the Bulge in Werrith, Belgium. And so that was the last time that they made their journey, because some neighbor turned them into the SS, and they were all captured and demised. Coramiles Jefferson of CMJ Resources emcee the event. We had Elder Richard Jones, Sanctuary of Praise Soul Patrol, that was on hand to help us out, who opened the event with a prayer. And Brianna Salter, 11 years old, sang the National Anthem. Thank you, Terry Burns of Standing Ovation Talent Group. Howard Gentry, who you see right there. Young Blacks in Action, thank you for your help and support. And Keith Rush, a soloist, they all performed for us. And I would like to also thank the Raffman Club, the Omega Psi Phi fraternity Chi Tau chapter, Officer, Orlando Police Officer Joseph Lundey, and Orlando Police Officer Tia Pruitt, and Orlando Police Department Citizens Volunteers. We had some Citizens Observer Officers that were there on hand, too. Everything ran smoothly, from setup to directing and parking, and serving the food, and breaking down of the event. And I'd also like to especially thank, and that's Terry Burns and the Standing Ovation Talent Group. I'd like to thank Cynthia Wilson, my aide, who was the major event planner for this, Mike Pavelko, who's the director of Hankins Park Community Center, Brenda Clark with the L. Claudia Allen Center, Herb Williams also with the Claudia Allen Center, James Reggie Colliman, Communications here, thank you, Ebony Deputy, who is with the Smith Center and Maurice Hampton Smith Center, and of course, George Jordan, president of the Raffman Club, and Marlon Potey, who is the center manager for the Smith Center, and Akiva Wilson. And thanks, Cynthia, for taking all of the great pictures, because they do look good. And also, on Saturday, we celebrated with the 100 black men of Orlando. They had their scholarship award dinner, and this was a great event. Tim Johnson and Reginald McGill are also members of that organization. And it's a wonderful thing when you have an organization, not nonprofit organizations, that's giving out $100,000 in scholarships to our young people, specifically those graduates from Jones High School, and that was done this year. And then, if you total up the past nine years, they've given out about $900,000 in scholarships to the students. And this was held at the Rosen Center in Orlando, and beautifully displayed venue. Byron Brooks, our CAO, was a part of the presentation as well. And Ronald Rogers, the president, was a great. Mark Morel, who spoke before this city council, former mayor of New Orleans, and now the director of the National Urban League, was the guest speaker. And our very own Judge Perry was there on hand to take part in the service as well. So it's really great to see such a great organization still continuing. And not only do they give the scholarships to these students, but they also follow up with these students, to make sure that if they're having any problems, they're there to counsel them and to work with them. Deputy Chief Charles Robinson is also a part of that organization as well. So they do a lot of great things for the students, and they give them iPads, computers to help them in their college work, and so they really keep them prepared. And so thanks to all of those sponsors, corporate sponsors, that help out, too. You really help to make a difference in the lives of some people. And that's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District One. Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three comments quickly on the agenda. First of all, item B1, I'm glad to see the city continuing our support for the City Arts Factory. That's a, if you haven't been there, it's a facility two blocks down Orange Avenue, and I'd like to congratulate Barbara Hartley and Jennifer Quigley and their team on introducing and continuing to offer the arts to our residents. So thank you very much for doing that. I encourage everybody to go down there and check it out, it's a great spot. Also, B, excuse me, C7, like to thank our friends from Orange Cycle Works, anybody that invests their time and money in our city, you have my congratulations and thanks. So we appreciate you continuing to invest in our city. And finally, item C13, a voluntary annexation, which will benefit not only the city but the county as well. But the reason I mention that, I think it's further evidence that our investment in the medical city community continues to offer residential and commercial opportunities for both the city and the county. So as we go through that process, I think that'll be a good thing for the southeastern part of the city. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. And last but not least, Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Deter in the arts comment, we really have to keep promoting the arts. That's very good, and thank you. And we also have to promote soccer. We have the soccer fever. And Ed, do you have those pictures? District Number Two, taking the lead, as we usually do on things around the city. That was a healthy comment, okay, guys? I don't take it personal. We had a ribbon-cutting ceremony of the restored District Two Soccer Corral. The corral is located at the Inglewood Neighborhood Center. The new summit was possible through a partnership with Coca-Cola, Family Parks and Recreation, and our office. We had over 200 children from their summer camp join us, along with members of the under-23 Orlando City Soccer Team, representatives from Coca-Cola, some of the one and only District Two Soccer Team players and city staff. Thanks to Brenda March, Taryn Rotkowitz, Lisa Early, and Anna, my aide, for putting the event together. I would like to also give thanks to Mrs. Kay Rollins from the Orlando City Soccer for sending their players and for the giveaways. And along with that, I want to do a little challenge here to the other commissioners, since we already have our nice team. I'd like for them to come up with a team of their own in their district, so we can start a, some sort of a in-between districts competition. Well, you'll think about that. But you'll think, in the meantime, we'll be training. So, that being said, happy belated Father's Day to all of fathers, and to some of the mothers that are fathers and mothers, so that goes both ways. On Friday, I attended the gentleman Father's Day Celebration. My liaison officer, Eddie Rosado, my aide, Anna Cruz, and myself had a great time with those seniors. We always do, every year. No, I did not, I did walk with the walk a mile on, what is it, on her shoes, but I did not wear the heels, so let me make that very clear.
Wimp.
Call it a Hispanic match or whatever it is, call it whatever you want to call it, that's fine. I did walk the mile, and I am supporting that. Full force against domestic violence. No heels, though. So, that being said, let's move along to the next one. National Night Out, we have, though it opens up, the actual kickoff, or the National Night Out is on August 6th, but on the 25th of July, we're gonna have our own, very own district National Night Out kickoff party, and it's gonna be hosted at Sedano's Supermarket Plaza at the corner of Curry, Ford, and Semran. You are all invited, it's gonna be fun. Some guys may wear heels, some may not. But we're gonna have, we're gonna be talking about crime prevention measures, and SEPTIT, which is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. We're gonna have free food and drinks, giveaways, and entertainment. With that being said, one more item. I want to personally congratulate my good friend and Master Police Officer Evan Cantrell. You have served the city not just well, you have served the city in an excellent fashion, and you have done a great job. I have most admiration for you. I had the chance to work with him when I was with the Orlando Police Department, and you can find a finer gentleman, an officer and a gentleman. So congratulations to you. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a motion to...
There's a motion, second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheehan. On favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations to all who had an item on the consent agenda. Okay, we will recess the city council meeting without objection and convene the CRA meeting. First item of business is accepting meeting minutes from the CRA Advisory Board, April 24th. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
No motion. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Linum. On favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Second item is approving meeting minutes from the CRA meeting of May the 20th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
No motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ortiz. On favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Number Three, Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Item number three today is the Homeless Outreach Funding Agreement. The downtown outlook plan provides that the CRA may fund outreach programs to assist homeless persons in regaining self-sufficiency, and to help minimize the impact of homelessness on the residents and businesses of the downtown area. Over the past two years, the Central Florida Commission on Homelessness has provided outreach services throughout the downtown CRA area through two outreach specialists. However, recently, that commission has recalibrated its mission and is now phasing out that type, those types of programmatic services to the community. However, the Healthcare Center for the Homeless, or HCCH, desires to provide outreach services within the downtown CRA, and the CRA will partner with ACCH in order to retain the services of the two homeless outreach specialists currently serving the downtown CRA area. The CRA will enter into a four-party funding agreement, and I stop and point out that this was originally presented to you as a five-party agreement. However, the Community Food and Outreach Center is no longer a party to the agreement due to the emergence of the Regional Commission on Homelessness as a funding source. Therefore, the CRA will enter into a four-party funding agreement with the ACCH, the Central Florida Commission on Homelessness, the commission, and the Homeless Services Network of Central Florida, in order to provide funding for two homeless outreach specialists for the term of July 1, 2013, to June 30th of 2014. The total cost for this, for these services is $120,000. That includes all salaries, benefits, and operation, associated operational expenses. The commission has agreed to contribute $25,000 to this program. The Homeless Services Network, $35,000, those two together making $60,000, and the other $60,000 would come from the CRA for a total of $120,000. ACCH will supervise the activities of the homeless outreach specialists and will provide quarterly progress and summary reports to the other parties of the agreement. The CRA Advisory Board recommended approval at its May 30th meeting, and staffs request CRA approval of the homeless outreach funding agreement, subject to review and approval by the City Attorney's Office and authorization for the chairman and the executive director to execute such agreement. Staff also requests authorization of expenditures from the downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Trust Fund in the amount of $60,000 for the homeless outreach funding agreement.
I'm gonna move approval, but I have a comment.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Linum.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Linum.
Mayor, I think you remember about three or four years ago, maybe a little longer, Lila Allen and I went down to Miami and Fort Lauderdale, and to look at the homeless facilities down there. One of the things, especially for, well, for both of the communities, we know in Miami, they have, what is it, a restaurant tax?
Restaurant tax.
And they have lots of outreach. So you don't normally just walk along and see the number of homeless people hang around like they do on Glen Lane and near the Homeless Coalition. And now that we get a new facility, I would like to propose, as we pay these dollars, look at the possibility of an ordinance for how these facilities operate. It just makes no sense to have so many people on the streets, especially when you do an outreach. And it really will require some type of ordinance to move them off the streets into, and we promised this to the community on the new Homeless Coalition facility, that especially they're next to the, to the facility there, the Muslim temple there, the mosque, to the mosque, that this just doesn't work for our housing, for our residents, and for folks to be hanging on the streets. So part of outreach, I like to look at the contracts to see, what are we talking about? What kind of outreach are they really, really gonna do? And will it be a part of pulling people into the campus there and getting them off the streets for services? And if they don't do that, I think we ought to have some kind of penalty, and that goes to all the facilities down there. I think we are, there's just a terrible mistake on how we're handling, not the part we do in terms of, with that ordinance, but we have got to require some more strategic actions in case management and operational hours and performance. So that is just my take on it, and I'd like to maybe, I know maybe with you right now, and we're gonna deal with the Homeless Coalition here in a minute, but just, if we're gonna put money in it, I'd like to have us come up with an opportunity to talk with the providers and say, "This has got to be done to the best of our ability, short of a restaurant tax that can give us dollars." But there ought to be some level of performance standards to help the businesses, whether they're downtown, or whether they're in Paramore, or whether they're on John Young, I don't care where it is, we've gotta do better about this. So maybe later we can talk.
Sure, look forward to it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Because of the nature of this, and because of the fact that there may be a perceived conflict of interest, I'm going to abstain, and I'll file a paperwork with the clerk.
Madam Clerk, you'll take note of that abstention.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
I just want to add a few comments. I had the chance to speak to Mr. Walter Hawkins, and he showed me a report from some of these gentlemen, and I was very pleased about the kind of, how they're performing their duties. I just want to add that if this is a, this is a measure of how we're gonna be working with this particular CRA, the monies that we're gonna be putting into it, I'm very happy that it's been invested in such fashion. Adding to what Commissioner Linum has said, she has, she's offering a tremendous idea, I guess, establishing some metrics, but you guys have been doing a great job, and I think this is money well invested. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further questions or comments? Hearing none, on favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number Four, Thomas.
Thinking of number four is the Coalition for the Homeless Men's Service Center Funding Agreement. Agreement. As we all know, for many, many years, the Coalition for the Homeless has operated a men's pavilion as a nighttime drop-in center, providing, um, services to up to 339 men per night, allowing them to sleep, uh, on the floor there in an open air, air facility. That current operation, we feel, does not provide occupants with, with any intake or case management services, and thus, and thusly does not best serve the Coalition's clients or the surrounding our community and neighborhood. Coalition has, has designed, as you know, with CDBG funds from both the county as well as the City of Orlando, has designed and is now constructing a new men's service center facility, and the programming associated with that facility addresses, um, the issues that, that I just mentioned. The men's service center is currently under construction, is scheduled to open in September of this year. Upon opening, the Coalition intends to operate programs within this facility aimed at assisting homeless persons in regaining self-sufficiency by providing intake and case, comprehensive case management for all of its residents. The, uh, funding agreement, uh, associated with this project and this program proposes the CRA's contribution of some $3 million through a series of annual payments over a 10-year period, beginning with $500,000 in the first year, which begins July, uh, of this year, and decreasing in amount over the remaining nine years. Conditions to this funding includes, but it's not, um, uh, not exclusively, um, provision of a 24/7, 365-day, uh, facility with ongoing intake and comprehensive case management for all of the residents, the demonstration in year three, which is the year 2015, of matching dollar-for-dollar, uh, funding from other sources, and serving breakfast and dinner to all men's service center, uh, residents, as well as lunch to the First Steps Program participants. In a, in addition, in, uh, Schedule B, uh, associated with this document sets forth performance goals for the Coalition related to housing, income, employment, uh, use of VPN services and self-sufficiency. The Coalition will provide quarterly and annual reports showing how they are meeting the goals of Schedule B, as well as the conditions to the funding, uh, which are outlined in Section Four of, of this agreement. I'd like to stop and recognize for a moment, uh, Mayor and Commissioners, our Brent Trotter and Allison Craw, who are here from the Coalition for the Homeless, uh, and we have worked very closely, uh, with, uh, Brent, Allison and others from his staff and several, uh, other persons, um, not represented here, uh, at this time. In addition, uh, or including, I should say, Donna White, uh, Director of Homeless Services for Orange County, uh, and Kathy Jackson, who, uh, heads up the, uh, Homeless Services Network. So, um, just wanted to point out, a lot of work has gone into this with a lot of people, and we feel good about the agreement. The CRA advisory board recommends approval, uh, recommended approval in its May 30th meeting, and staffs requesting CRA approval, uh, of the Coalition for the Homeless Men's Service Center Funding Agreement, subject to review and approval by the City Attorney's Office and authorization for the chairman and the executive director to execute such agreement. Staff also requests authorization of expenditures from the Downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Trust Fund in the amount of $3 million for the Coalition for the Homeless Men's Service Center Funding Agreement.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. Commissioner Linum.
Um, I just wanted to, what I said earlier, it's sort of fallen more on this, and we know Brett and Allison and I used to work with Donna many years ago, um, and I completed my master's, the thesis of coming out of the, the homeless, um, uh, Orlando Homeless Coalition. But the, the issue is, with that amount of money, there has to be some performance standards on how we treat people who are outside that building.
True.
That cannot just sit around on the street hundreds at a time. It's just not fair and it's not right to the community. It's literally destroyed Paramore, and everybody keeps looking for it. The Paramore is saying, "Oh, they're having such bad problems." Well, you put a homeless coalition over there and turned everybody loose and said it was all right. And though, as a social worker, I support it wholeheartedly, I believe there has to be some performance standards, and Dean or someone, if we have to go to, uh, Mayor, some type of ordinance that says, if you're gonna accept these dollars, there has to be some performance standards outside of just how the dollars are spent internally. But what are you gonna do about moving these people off the streets? We can't allow them. OPD simply cannot just go and babysit-
True.
-these folks on this street. I've seen them do it-
Yes.
-over and over and over, 15 years.
Yes.
And so I would like Brett, to your staff, to, and we indicated this when we were moving toward the new-
Sure.
-uh, uh, facility, if you remember-
Yes.
-to say, we will absolutely require these people come off the streets, and this one stop, there would be everyone to go in, whether they can use the telephone, use the restroom facilities, they will not be on the streets. There should not be people on the street in masks that way, no matter which facility it is in downtown, but certainly not one we are supporting, uh, the level we have since its inception, not just now, just from the beginning, from the trade winds of, what was that, what is that, uh, uh, the bus?
Trailways.
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 Trailways. That's when I did my master's. I was on Central and, and, uh, Huey. Um, there, the old facility, and then it moved over to TV9 Station, but, and went in there and just, just totally destroyed that community. So I just want us to do the right thing-
Okay.
-for the facility, but do the right thing for the community and for the, and the, for the, 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 the people who are receiving the services.
Absolutely, Commissioner, and I'm, I'm happy to report that a lot of attention went into, to those very things by the working group, um, and one of the conditions of the funding, um, is, is that, um, that type of, I may call it laundering, um, will, will be discouraged and not allowed, obviously, on the property itself. Um, but also, you may recall that in the design of the physical facility, of the facility itself, it's designed so that the main interest and the queuing area, if you will, is internal to the site-
Right.
-and not very obvious from the public right of way. Uh, that was done, obviously, very purposely, and our friends at the Coalition for the Homeless agreed to that, so that we could maintain a better, uh, visible integrity to the area. Um, the final thing I would say is going from a men's pavilion center, which has a mass sort of outmigration at six, between six and seven in the morning of, of many, of hundreds of, of men, to a men's service center, which will provide in-house, comprehensive case management to all of its residents, is a completely different dynamic, and we, we do not expect then to see that, that fanning out of hundreds of men every morning going onto the community. We do expect to see men leaving that facility-
To go to work.
-searching jobs and going, and going to jobs.
Yes.
So, so we expect a dynamic, the, the circumstances and, and the, uh, conditions that you are concerned about, we're concerned about those as well on both sides of the equation, and we think that, um, uh, there will, you'll see market improvement with this.
I just know, I've, I've gone to some of the largest homeless coalitions and facilities in America-
Yes, ma'am.
-and aside from Los Angeles, and it's not around the facility, it's just up and down the street there.
Right.
Um, you do not see that mass gathering just before feeding or just after, or just hanging around. And I think that's one thing we can do, and, um, one of the things we said we will absolutely eliminate, and if it's not just for the men they serve, 300 or 400 or 500, it's everybody on that street. There shouldn't be anybody out there.
Right.
Okay.
We're working on it. I think you'll see an improvement.
Okay.
Definitely improvement.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you. Um, congratulations to Brent. Brent is, um, I've had long conversations with Thomas about some of the issues related, and I'm convinced that your team has got the team to make this thing happen. Um, I too am concerned about the regular investment that we make and the standards that we set and the outcomes that we set, and I appreciate the flexibility for this first year or two to kind of make sure that we, uh, have reachable goals.
Correct.
Uh, and that, that we are pretty, um, stringent upon achieving those goals.
Yes.
So, um, but I think Brent's got the right team over there to accomplish that task, and, uh, and I think that we could, we'll see a better environment over there because of how we're treating them, so.
We certainly agree. Thank you, Commissioner.
Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to take so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number five.
Thank you, Mayor. Number five is the CRA Budget Amendment One and Resolution. Proposed amendments to the 2012-2013 CRA budget include an expense line item of $500,000 for the Coalition for the Homeless Men's Service Center, and expense line item of $60,000 for the Homeless Outreach Coordinator Agreement. Proposed amendment also includes a budget transfer in the amount of $560,000 to revenues, into revenues to accommodate such expenditures. CRA advisory board recommended approval, uh, at its May 30th meeting, and staff is requesting CRA approval of the Community Redevelopment Agency Budget Resolution One, amending the 2012-2013 CRA budget to include the changes stated in the resolution and authorization of the expenditures from the Downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Area Trust Fund in accordance with such revised budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Linum. Discussion, Commissioner Stewart.
Uh, Mayor, as the item number three is funded in item number five, I'm gonna need to also abstain from this, and I'll file the paperwork with the clerk.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Great.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to take so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Thomas. Any further residents to come forward to CRA?
There's none.
Then we're adjourned without objection. We'll reconvene the city council meeting. That brings us to hearings, ordinances on first read. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, amending growth management plan to amend urban design goal eight and associated objectives and policies relating to scenic identity, to amend urban design figures UD 30 relating to skyline vistas, UD 31 relating to civic gateways and enhanced landscape corridors, and UD 32 relating to view corridors, and to amend future land use policy 1.5.2 relating to the certification boundary, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to take so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, let's move to hearings, ordinances on second reading, number one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the planned development zoning district regulations for the Millennium Park Plan Development, generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of South John Young Parkway and Millennium Boulevard, comprised of 7.63 acres, more or less, amending the planned development district's development standards, development plan, and conditions of development, directing amendment of the official zoning map series, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Eng. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to take so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance amending Article Three, Chapter Five of the Code of the City of Orlando, Florida, entitled Red Light Infractions, to repeal Sections 5.20 through 5.27, and adopt Section 5.20 entitled Purpose and Intent, Section 5.21 entitled Implementation of General Law, and Section 5.22 entitled Rules and Regulations to implement changes to the Mark Wondell Traffic Safety Act, providing for severability and an effective date.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from
the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to take so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida, certain real property generally located north of South Gate Commerce Boulevard, south of Pine Lock Avenue, on the east side of South Orange Avenue, and addressed as 3117 South Orange Avenue, comprised of .71 acres, more or less, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as mixed-use corridor medium intensity on the city's official future land use map, and designating the property as mixed-use corridor medium intensity with specially-planned area overlay district on the city's official zoning map, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Linum. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to take so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to fertilizer application, creating Section 31.26 within the City of Orlando Stormwater Code, providing definitions, regulating the time, place, and manner of fertilizer application-
Okay.
-providing exemptions and training and licensing requirements for commercial applicators, providing for severability, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Eng, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Let's see, Kyle, we have eight speaker guards here, so why don't you give us an overview? And there have been some, uh, emails directed to council members, um, questioning whether we ought to go further with the regulation, and can you, uh, give us the same discussion you gave us at, um, at, uh-
Gender Review.
Gender Review, that's it. That's what I'm looking for.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, and City Commissioners, Kyle Shepard, Assistant City Attorney, before you today for your consideration on second reading of public hearing, is proposed ordinance 2013-30 relating to the application of fertilizer. This ordinance would amend the City of Orlando Stormwater Code to incorporate the state of Florida's model fertilizer ordinance. The city is obligated by law to adopt the model ordinance as a condition of our, see if I can get this right, municipal, separate storm sewer system, uh, which is issued to us under the NPDES, uh, or the Clean Water Act. It's issued by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection under authority of the EP, the US EPA. This permit authorized the City of Orlando to operate and maintain a stormwater utility throughout the City of Orlando. The main purpose of the ordinance is to limit the use of certain fertilizers on turf, turf grass and landscape plants. Fertilizers containing nitrogen and phosphorus can run off, do run off into nearby lakes, ponds and streams. These nutrients can dramatically upset the natural biological and chemical composition of water bodies, leading to significant environmental damage. This ordinance, uh, if adopted by you today, would restrict the application of fertilizers that contain phosphorus and nitrogen. Uh, one of the, uh, I'm gonna go over just a few of the sort of key points in the, in the ordinance. The ordinance is technical, and there's some details to it, but in general, one of the things that applicators, and that includes institutional, commercial, and individual applicators cannot do, is apply these sorts of fertilizers just before periods of heavy rain. That's when those fertilizers are especially susceptible to runoff into nearby lakes and streams. The ordinance also prohibits the application of fertilizers within 10 feet of water bodies, and it also requires that individuals that own property on water bodies maintain a low-impact zone within 10 feet of the ordinary high water line of the lake. And by a low-impact zone, what we mean is maintain plants, uh, in that area that do not require, uh, as much fertilizer or any fertilizer. Um, the one exception to that is if you have a spreader device that includes a deflection shield, you can spread within, uh, three feet of a water body, but otherwise you're prohibited from spreading fertilizers within 10 feet of a water body. You must also now by ordinance comply with the, uh, labels that you find on your, on your fertilizer. Under our current law, there's no requirement for that, uh, at the local level. Um, you may not apply fertilizer just before or just after seeding or sodding. Okay, so again, at that particular time when you've just thrown out fresh seed or put down fresh sod, uh, the fertilizer that you put down is especially susceptible to, to runoff and, um, getting into our, um, into our water bodies. On top of that, you may also, and this, this should go without saying, but unfortunately, folks don't, don't think about it sometimes, you gotta keep your fertilizer off impervious surfaces, like your driveway and your sidewalk, where it easily gets, uh, transported into, uh, the municipal stormwater system. On top of all that, you must maintain, as I said, the, the low-maintenance landscaping area. You must maintain that anytime you do a substantial improvement to your home, uh, or you build a new home. So it would not apply to existing homes, just like any code we pass, it applies at the point that you come in to, um, to do a substantial improvement. Additionally, grass clippings, which, um, um, also contain, um, material that can, um, bloom algae, uh, and deplete oxygen within water bodies, you can't put that out in the, uh, street or sewer, uh, either. This ordinance applies to any person applying fertilizer in the City of Orlando. That includes, as I said, institutional applicators, commercial applicators, and private individuals. The ordinance exempts only bona fide farm operations and research operations. Unlike some ordinances, some ordinances, um, exempt golf courses, for example, which, as you know, are one of the, um, primary culprits in adding nitrogen and phosphorus into our water bodies. We do not, uh, propose, um, exempting golf courses. In addition to all these regulations, commercial and institutional applicators must undergo fertilizer training, approved fertilizer training at the University of Florida Extension Program, and commercial applicators must carry their state applicator's license while working in the field. They will no longer be able to receive a local business tax receipt, the BTR, Business Tax Receipt, from the city's permitting official until they undergo that training. That, um, requirement, uh, begins at the end of this calendar year. Now, this ordinance that we're proposing to you is the state's model ordinance, and the reason why that we're proposing the state model ordinance is because it's the only one that state law will allow you to, uh, adopt right now. As I mentioned to you, we are required by law to adopt the model ordinance under our NPDES permit, and we have a deadline for doing that. That deadline is the end of this, end of this month. If you, uh, were to advise us to, uh, go back and seek amendments to the ordinance, uh, to make the ordinance stricter, there is a process that has to be undertaken under Florida statutes, um, and it involves- and it involves research and accumulation of the studies that apply to our local ecology. And then there's a comment period that has to be undertaken as well by a number of state agencies. So what's before you today is the model. This is the only thing that is available for us to adopt under, under current law, and for that reason, and to protect our water bodies in the City of Orlando, staff recommends the adoption of proposed ordinance twenty thirteen dash thirty. If you have any questions, I'll be here, but I think you have some public testimony.
We do, thank you, Kyle. Are there questions for Kyle? Okay, I have a number of people that would like to speak on this ordinance, so the procedure is that when I call your name, come to the microphone, give your name and address, direct all remarks to the council, not to any one member. You'll have five minutes, and the clerk will time the five minutes. So the first three are going to be Chuck O'Neil, followed by Jerry Weiss, followed by Todd Josko. So Chuck O'Neil.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, City Commission. My name is Chuck O'Neil from one oh one Stagridge Court, Longwood, Florida. I represent the Natural Resources Committee of the Legal Women Voters of Orange County. The Natural Resources Committee of the Legal Women Voters of Orange County is comprised of forty-five citizen volunteers whose expertise includes environmental engineering, environmental studies, geology, environmental law, hydrogeology, landscaping, and agricultural best management practices, public policy studies, and other related fields. We have examined ordinance twenty thirteen dash thirty and found it to be lacking in several areas. We feel the prohibited application period should be amended to include the rainy season from June first to September thirtieth, as other Florida communities have specified. We feel granular fertilizer should be required to have no less than fifty percent slow-release nitrogen, as other Florida communities have required. We feel there should be an application limit of four pounds of nitrogen per one thousand square feet in any calendar year, as other Florida communities have established. We feel that the per-application limit of liquid fertilizer should be no more than point five pounds of nitrogen per one thousand square feet, as other Florida communities have adopted. We ask that the Orlando City Council table the adoption of this ordinance until these and any other prudent revisions can be made under a reasonable vetting period by the public. Our land and rivers are too important to the quality of life of our citizens for the City Council to ratify an incomplete fertilizer ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Weiss.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Weiss. I live on Lake Formosa and in downtown Orlando, and I have three properties on Lake Formosa, so it's a very important lake for me. And I can tell you, I've lived there many years, but in the last five years, the lake has gotten, the water quality has gotten a lot worse. There's a lot of empirical evidence to this. I'll mention a couple of things. When I go out on the dock and look down and see the plants in the water, they used to be green, they used to be healthy-looking, now there's like a gray kind of scum all over everything. There were people who used to go fishing that I got to know over the years on the lake. They don't come anymore. They say the lake is dying, there's nothing to catch, and it's just a really bad situation. The lake used to never have those, those times when, when, when the lake smells. I think you, I think you know what I'm talking about, and now there's four or five times a year when the lake actually smells, and when I bring people, you know, into my backyard, I have to explain, oh, this is temporary, you know, this will go away. It's not like this all the time, and it's kind of embarrassing. So I'm real concerned about this. I see fertilizer being applied around the lake. Part of the, part of the land around the lake is parkland, and the city takes care of that, and there's fertilizer applied there. There's also city employees that, that cut the grass on the, on the embankment of the lake, and when they're done, there are grass clippings all over, all over the water, but that's another issue. But the reason why I came here today is because I received a response from Mr., from Mr. John Ippol, or Ippol, who returned an email that I, sent me an email back for a letter that I sent to the mayor's office, and there are a couple of things in this letter that really kind of bothered me. Let me read you a part. It says, "The statute," meaning the, the state statute, "further states that we must consider all relevant scientific information. To fulfill these requirements, we will need more time." And I'm wondering to myself, everybody knows that you have a deadline of June thirtieth, or else you lose your, your license from the state to, to put water into the lakes. Why hasn't, why hasn't, why haven't samples been taken? Why hasn't this been worked on for the last six months or for a year? You had nothing, so you knew that you, that you should do something, and yet it seems like nothing was done, that more time needs to be done for these studies. And the other thing I'm wondering about is, if, if the budget didn't allow for studies, or if the manpower didn't allow for studies, then why couldn't somebody pick up the phone and call so many other cities like Tampa, St. Pete, Naples, that all have ordinances, much stricter ordinances than, than you're proposing to approve? And why can't, couldn't the information be, be discussed and, 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 you know, information be passed between the cities that have done the homework and have done the research and the people taking care of this in Orlando? So those are the questions that I was, was wondering, and I just hope that, you know, the taxes that I pay as a taxpayer for these three properties on the lake, that something would be done to really help the water quality of this lake, because I have to live there every day, and it's very important to me. Thank you.
Just, you know, we're extremely concerned about the water quality in all the hundred and ten lakes in the City of Orlando, and I don't know specifically on the cities that were referenced, Kyle, but I do know that a lot of those ordinances, city ordinances, were adopted prior to the state law, and they were not required to gather the type of information that the City of Orlando would now be required to have as stringent a ordinance, they're grandfathered in essence. Okay, Todd Josko, and then Marjorie Holt.
Good afternoon. My name is Todd Josko, twenty-nine-hundred West Azalea in Tampa, and I'm here this afternoon on behalf of the Florida Turf Grass Association. It's a statewide trade association headquartered in Lakeland that represents professionals that work in the turf industries. We have side growers, we have golf course superintendents, we have lawn care companies, and we're obviously very concerned about the environment and being good stewards of the environment. I'm here to support your proposed ordinance, and, and I think that there's been some comments, and you'll probably hear some more, that are very heartfelt, but sometimes are a little misguided. This becomes an emotional subject. You know, first, to be clear, your ordinance is supported by DEP. It mirrors our own Department of Environmental Protections recommendations. It's, it's a mischaracterization to say that it's a minimum standard. It's, it's the standard. Florida statute does allow you to add other restrictions, but as staff said, that there's a process involved, and one of that is to allow state agencies to vet the other restrictions that you're considering. I know it's, it's very tempting for folks to look at industry and say, well, I'm not sure they're saying what's really the truth. I'm not sure that the Sierra Club's saying what's the truth. Let's hear from the experts. Let's hear from DEP, let's hear from Department of Ag, let's hear from University of Florida IFIS. Those comments are very consistent, and all of those agencies do not support any of the restrictions that are being pitched by some of the advocacy groups that are here today, including blackouts and fifty percent slow releases and everything. They support the ordinance that you're considering as drafted. And the reason they don't support those extra restrictions is because the science is clear that those restrictions like blackout periods, they hurt water quality because they deny turf the needed nutrients it needs to do its job of being a filter against all types of urban runoff. When the turf is thick, it stops all different types of runoff that has nitrogen and different nutrients in it from entering waterways. When it's weakened because it's not getting the nutrients it needs, then it allows for a very efficient flow of things to get into waterways. So your ordinance is the gold standard. There's just been a lot of studies that have been done as of late. DEP just finished a seven-year study looking at leaching, and they had tremendous amounts of rainfall and tremendous amounts of sloping, and time after time, the science shows that if you put turf, if you put fertilizer down improperly, in proper fashion, it doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't go anywhere leaching, it doesn't go anywhere runoff, it stays put. What is a good idea for an ordinance is to focus on education, because some folks don't know best practices, and your ordinance focuses on teaching best practices to recirculate yard clippings, to not fertilize near impervious surfaces. Those are the things that make a difference. You know, the time and time again, we've seen research on the issues of leaching and runoff, and it's just not issues. So focusing on those things is really a nonstarter, and it's a lost opportunity to teach things that really do make a difference, that folks can easily understand and be good stewards in their own backyard. You know, the mayor made a good point, that there are some cities that have done other restrictions, but since there is a model ordinance been put in place since two thousand and eight, and since there's been a process to allow state agencies to opine, very few cities have done different than the model ordinance, because now they have the benefit of saying, this is what science says, and it becomes an emotional issue, and I know it becomes easy to say, well, there's problems with our water bodies, let's just do more. Why can't we do two, you know, nothing, nothing's too much, but the science just says different, that there are things that can sound good, but they're counterproductive, and they have unintended consequences of putting nutrients in the waterways. So we'd ask that you adopt the ordinance as is and hold back from weakening from these other restrictions. We talked about science, but just want to touch on one other thing right there, and that's just the enforceability of restrictions. I don't think anyone wants to make an ordinance that would allow code enforcement to come on folks' property and take fertilizer samples and things to see what the nutrient contents and the nitrogen contents. That's not good government. What really changes behavior is education, and people want to do the right things, and I think consistency of message, making sure that the ordinance you pass agrees with the instructions that are on a bag of fertilizer that are bound by statewide urban turf rules that limit the amount of nutrients that can be put in the bag. So, you know, we commend you for taking an aggressive step forward today. Ask you to pass your ordinances as proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marjorie Holt.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm Marjorie Holt, Conservation Chair and the Chair for the Sierra Club, the Central Florida Group. We cover Lake Seminole, Orange, and Osceola Counties, so we have quite a bit of work to do. I'm here today representing the Sierra Club, and I understand that you're looking to adopt the model ordinance to keep your, well, it's in conjunction with your stormwater permit. It's so unfortunate that we're at this point in time where these two are coming together. Macy Xander and I met with Mr. John Ippol, I believe that was at the end of May, and we discussed the fertilizer ordinance. I presented him with the City of Rockledge's latest adopted ordinance, which calls for stricter application standards. We have since communicated back to the city. There was absolutely no response once we got the draft, and we're sorry for this lack of communication, but we're here now because we understand you have to adopt an ordinance to meet your stormwater permit. What I'm asking you to do is to commit, to commit to a time when you can bring back this ordinance and look at it to adopt some stricter standards and get greater community input on this. The Manatee County ordinance has a whole list of supporting documentation, and that is what the Sierra Club is using as its model. And right on their website, you can click on the supporting documentation, and there is scientific data for which Manatee County backed up their prohibitions for commercial and residential application standards during the rainy season, and that would be June through September, I think, what, thirtieth, whenever we have our, I think, our hurricane season too goes by that. So I'm asking the mayor and the city council to commit to bringing this back to a date certain, and I believe it would be good to look at working as you revise your landscape ordinance. I believe that's going for revisions at the end of this summer. So with that in mind, I would also like to say, this model ordinance, these are minimum standards. Year after year, the state legislature tries to preempt local governments from enacting stricter standards, and there is, there's great competition between the turf grass industry and the pesticide industry. Why would they want, why would they want us to set stricter standards? It's not in their best interest, but it's in ours. So we'll be glad to sit down. We've got the scientific data. So I'm Marge Holt, and give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you. We continue to monitor and review all of our ordinances to see if there's better ways we can do things, so we are going to be evaluating our landscape code, so that may give us an opportunity to take a fresh look at this as well. Okay, Maria Bolton-Hoobert? It's a J and H?
Joe Bear. I was just guessing the J was an H. No worries. I write like a doctor, but I'm not. My name is Maria Bolton-Jo Bear. I live at five-two-four Meridale Ave, Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight-zero-three, right here in the city. First of all, thank you guys for having this. Unfortunately, there's probably about a thousand people that are not here right now due to the fact that this was not a convenient time. Most people work a nine-to-five. We were told that the water issue was going to happen at two. It's now about three-fifty, so if you want to further this another time, I believe this should be on a Saturday at six o'clock, more advertising on all the networks. You're missing thousands of people in this room right now. That would be impacted. So anyway, I moved from Oviedo, Seminole County, the natural choice, to the City of Orlando, which is trying to do, be the greenest city, I think, in the southeast, and the greenest thing I do see right now is all this algae on all these lakes. Buddy Dyer, you said that there's a hundred and ten lakes in central Florida. That's a really good number to know. I wasn't aware of that, and that makes me...
It's actually in the City of Orlando.
In the City of Orlando, forgive me. So a hundred and ten lakes in the City of Orlando, it's a really good number to know, and that's, that just makes me more upset. I've seen this fertilizer guy, I don't know his name, he just spoke, I've seen him at about five different meetings so far. He's paid by his company to fly, to drive, to go to all these meetings, to speak to every council meeting. I just want you to know that. I drove here by myself, I'm representing myself and other constituents. No one paid me to be here. The fertilizer industry is a billion-dollar industry in bed with Monsanto. Monsanto's been big in the news right now, so if you're not aware of Monsanto and how we're killing people and how, if we're killing people with GMO, and how Europe and other places all around the world have banned GMO, and everybody knows about Monsanto, so please realize that this fertilizer industry is in bed with Monsanto. And again, this gentleman that just spoke, I've seen him at a bunch of meetings, you won't, this isn't the end of him, I need to get his name down. You're going to hear about him in other cities, so please keep him on your radar. He's paid to be here, I am not paid to be here. So anyway, I just want you to know, big fertilizer, big business. We're killing the water. I live near water, I don't live on a lake, I'm not there yet, but if you ask anybody, anybody that's fishing, nobody wants to eat fish that's coming from a contaminated body of water. Nobody wants to live near a contaminated body of water. This is huge, so please take this into consideration, that you've got big business with lobbyists with lots of money paying to be here and lying about false science. There's many different angles, and it depends who's paid to be here and who's paid to speak. There's a lot of science, and it can all be brought to the table on another day, on a Saturday at six o'clock, when thousands of other people can be here, and I want you to know, city beautiful, Orlando, huge city, you know this, you guys all know this. Millions of people from around the world come here every year. It's an awesome place to live, it's an awesome place to be. Fact of the matter is, we have a lot of contamination going on, and if you want Orlando to be the model city, to be the tourist destination of the world, we have so much work to do, and it's going to start with all of you listening to all of your constituents and not just big business, and realizing that we have a huge issue on our hands right now, and we're killing our water. The City of Rockledge, over in Brevard County, many people in this room might not even know where Rockledge is. It's a 100-foot tall, 100-foot tall, 100-foot tall, 100-foot tall, 100-foot tall, 100-foot where Rockledge is, they just passed a more stringent law. This, this minimum standard, it's crap. Forgive my French or English or whatever it is, but Rick Scott is not for environment, he's big, big business. But unfortunately, a lot of businesses think short-term, they think profits, they don't think long-term. The city of Rockledge recently passed a better standard for water quality, which would surpass what we would be doing here for Orlando. So if the city of Rockledge, which many people don't know about in Brevard County, can care and do more for their city, for their water quality, we could do that here in Orlando. And I really hope all of you really consider this and realize who's paid to be here today and who's not. Thank you so much, and I'm really grateful that you let us speak. But again, please, on a Saturday at 6:00 in the afternoon, more advertising. And thank you all, and I'm glad to live in a country where I can actually speak what I need to say and be honest and defend what I believe in. So thank you guys so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your passion. And Carrie Herman will be after Macy.
Good afternoon, city commissioners. My name is Macy Xander, and I live at 35 Hill Avenue, Orlando, 32801. I'd like to begin by refuting the statement on our lack of scientific evidence. The science that we are using to create this ordinance is all done by research conducted by turf scientists, not water scientists. IFIS itself has admitted that turf quality is the predominant goal of their research, not water quality. Why are we relying so heavily on scientific research of a field that is not directly concerned with the health of our water, but instead the quality of our grass? The reason why we are even here today is because of our water and its decline in quality as the result of excess nitrogen and phosphates. The reason we are looking to even pass a fertilizer ordinance is to counter the fact that 50% of our state's water is currently impaired. I caution that we focus on the fact that this is a water issue and not a turf issue. The science is there, and it is very elementary. You put chemicals, in this case fertilizer, on the ground, and the majority of it will volatilize, runoff, or leach. National Geographic has stated that on average, 50% of fertilizer is lost through one of these means. The nitrates and phosphates that enter water from sources such as fertilizer feed noxious, poisonous algal blooms, which in turn degrade water quality. Every person who has taken a high school biology class knows this. IFIS itself has said that fertilization should not occur within 24 hours of a rainfall event, and I think those of us who have lived in Orlando for any length of time know that it rains here. It rains here a lot, every day in fact during the summer. The rainy season ban that we are promoting is simply a codification of what IFIS has been promoting for the last decade. I'd also like to address any belief that this is a job-killing measure. According to Dr. Lisa Soto of the Marine Resource Council, before the Pinellas County ordinance was passed, 2% of lawn fertilizers at Home Depot were Florida-based companies. However, after the ordinance was passed, 75%, 75% of lawn fertilizers were Florida-based company products. Passing a strong ordinance has actually been shown to increase jobs. Another really interesting statistic was that after the regional ordinances in Tampa Bay were adopted, TruGreen opened a new residential lawn care center in Tampa and hired 175 new workers to help support the new emerging market. To date, I have heard of no specific example of a person who has lost a job due to the passage of a strong fertilizer ordinance, and believe me, we would have heard about it if that was the case. These ordinances have some serious success. In 2008, the Tampa Bay Estuary Program estimated that in Hillsborough County alone, 50% compliance with the strong ordinance would keep 30 tons of nitrogen out of Tampa Bay every single year. Since the passage of their ordinance, Tampa Bay documented more seagrass in the bay than has been recorded since 1950. Think of what these numbers could mean for the springs, lakes, and rivers in our region. We in Orlando are very fortunate to be the heart of many water systems. We're just above the headwaters of the Everglades, we're right at the base of the St. Johns, the Wakava. Wakava Springs and Rock Springs are facing serious declines in quality, and all of this comes down to us. The Tampa Bay Estuary Program also found that in Tampa, the nitrogen load reductions were as high as 20% in areas where the stronger fertilizer ordinance was in place. This is much higher than the 3% provided for adopting the minimal state ordinance, like what our council right now is thinking of proposing and adopting today. According to the Stockholm Environmental Institute, the valuation of Florida's clean water led to a range from $1.3 to $10.5 billion annually. Protecting our water resources isn't only the right thing to do, it's also the economical thing to do. And in a city like Orlando that relies so heavily upon tourism and its natural beauty, I think we are really, really overlooking how important this vote really is. I'm really proud to be a resident of Orlando. I haven't lived here very long, but I have fallen in love with this city. And just like you, I respect the work that the city is doing. I respect the work of John Eiple and the Sustainability Department, and the hard work of the Stormwater Division. I really do believe that we can be one of the greenest cities in the southeast, just like you aspire, Mayor Dyer. But I want to make sure that we're known for being green because of our sustainability and not because of our water. We can go stronger with this ordinance. Orlando residents deserve to have their water protected just as much as the 50 municipalities that have strong ordinances. And just most recently, Rockledge did pass theirs just last month, and so it is possible. Please send the ordinance back to draft. Let's be a true leader in stewardship of our most precious resource, our water. Thank you.
Thank you, Macy. And Charlene Cormandi is next.
Hi, my name is Kenny Herman. I'm a resident of 3961 Gathering Drive in Orlando, 32817. I am a resident of Orlando and a senior at UCF. And so today, I have chosen to speak on behalf of the people who were not here. I'm really, really fortunate, I got a call from my boss this weekend telling me I got to leave work at 1:00. Not that many people got that opportunity today to be able to be here and to talk to you. But I have 343 people who have signed this petition for a stronger fertilizer ordinance. And these people, just like me, just like the rest of us who are sitting here in the room with these nice neon stickers on, we really care about Florida's water, we want to see you adopt a stronger fertilizer ordinance, and we just really want you to consider having a very, very strong ordinance in this county, because we need this right now, we really do, so.
Thank you, Kenny.
Hello, my name's Charlene Cormandi, and I live 4290 Spoleto Circle, Oviedo, and I am an environmental studies student at UCF. In order to make this fertilizer ordinance effective, we really do need to have it be stronger than the current draft ordinance. Strong fertilizer ordinances have been passed in other areas like St. Pete, and Tampa, and Naples, and many different other places in Florida, and they're successfully protecting our waters, and it's time for Orlando to do the same. Step up, take leadership, and do the best job we can at protecting our waters. There are many different ways to do that. One way is the required use of 50% slow-release nitrogen, also no phosphorus without, and a soil test to say that it needs phosphorus application. Also, a yearly application limit of, for nitrogen of four pounds per 1,000 feet squared, and a rainy season ban on fertilizers that contain nitrogen and phosphorus. And this is the easiest, cheapest way to keep Orlando's waters clean, and if these measures are put into place, then Orlando's waters are going to be much healthier. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlene.
Good afternoon, Trini Quiroz, 11305, Spinning Real Circle, Orlando. I came to the meeting, as sometimes my practice, to listen to what the elected officials are doing. And when I was coming in, I saw this beautiful group of young people with their green neon signs, and I say, what are you doing here? And when they explained to me, I say, I'm with you. This is the way to participate in the affairs of your community and to protect the way of life that you think and that you know for a fact that is vital. I also recognize that pay lobbyists, people who, their livelihood is to defend the indefensible, do come and try to fool the people, thinking that they are from the community, but they are not. But we know them, we can hear the nuances, we know the lingo, we know who cares and who does not. So I applaud this group of young people, and I'm sure that you elected officials ought to be happy to have younger generations coming to express their feelings. Now, having said that, I like to think that the city of Orlando, where I first laid my eyes 47 years ago, is a totally different city, not because of all the Shangri-La stuff that is said here, but because all the transformation in these concrete edifices that go up. And it's like the tale of a city that has two tales in one. We talk about the beauty, we talk about everything, and this one time I have to reckon, Mrs. Lyman, for speaking her mind concerning the sometimes sad conditions that we see in despair and homelessness. How can you reconcile the city beautiful with all these other deplorable things that we see in our cities, along the Seminole, along Paramore? I practically know the city left and right, the county. I spend my time looking and joining groups that are trying to do something to lift the spirit in this community, and let me tell you, I'm always juggling which Orlando are we talking about, what reality most of these people live on. If you care for the despair, for the disenfranchised, for the hopelessness, then come down to where they are and see what is happening to them. What good is it to spend millions of dollars erecting edifices for homelessness and shelters and stuff if you cannot train them to be productive back in the community, to get a meaningful job, whatever job kind it is? We can have this beauty for the rest of the world, for the tourists, for the strangers and the foreigners to see the facade when we, the taxpayers, see the despair and the ugliness that has this particular city beautiful. So on one hand, we have Shangri-La, on the other hand, we have despair city. As a taxpayer of Orange County and paying 76 different kinds of taxes in the county and in the city, and that's what I was told, I object to the fact that you are passing an ordinance because time is of essence. As someone said before me, you have a timeline, which is the end of the month, why wait for the last minute, and why the lawyer who made such a good presentation did not do that before? I am for delaying the passing of this ordinance, study it, and give it a time and the seriousness that it needs in order to preserve the cleanliness of the waters of the 110-plus more lakes in the city of Orlando. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barry Trautman, something, Barry, your handwriting's not very good.
I'm sorry about that, Mayor.
That's okay.
My name is Barry Trautman, I live at 900
Okay, it was good enough that I got it close.
Okay. Live at 900 South Palmetto in Sanford, Florida. I represent the Florida Turf Grass Association, but I also represent Valley Crest Landscape Maintenance. We are a large landscape maintenance firm. We support the ordinance that you have proposed. The state model ordinance has a tremendous amount of work put into its development. It was scientifically vetted throughout the state. And the speaker said earlier, you know, I'm one of those people you'll see at these meetings. Well, if she'd have been around in 2003, she'd have seen me at meetings to develop best management practices. I care very much about Florida's environment, I care very much about landscapes, I care very much about the beauty of this community, I care very much about the people who work for us. And to, to, to support a model ordinance is a very easy thing to do, because it's the right thing to do. And I support it in ways that people in this room probably aren't aware of. We began in 2003 with the model, with the BMPs. We instituted the principles of those BMPs, which are the, the backbone of your model ordinance. We began instituting those in, late in, in 2005. We put a major effort into BMP certification as soon as that program was widely available. I think in the state of Florida, we now have over 500 of our employees certified in BMPs. And the BMPs are the best management practices, not just how we apply fertilizer, but how we manage landscape debris, choosing the right plants in the right place. There's a tremendous amount of science that goes into the best management practices and into this ordinance. To come in and say that you can strengthen the ordinance by doing something doesn't, doesn't sit with me unless you truly have that, that item vetted. The University of Florida and the DEP are very much concerned that summer blackouts are not the best thing. As a matter of fact, turf grass has a job to do in our community, and it's doing it very well. Landscapes have a job to do in our community. They're keeping the soil in place. Soil doesn't prevent pollution from getting into, into lakes and streams. Concrete doesn't prevent pollution from getting, pollution from getting in lakes and streams. Active root systems do. And landscapes that are properly fertilized do the best job of doing that. To say that we're going to deny fertilizing landscapes during the summer months, which is the height of the growing season, is a little like saying, well, I think I'll send my children to school today without breakfast, with breakfast, but I'm not going to give them lunch. We'll be home at 5:00, and we'll feed them. And we all know our kids will do okay, they'll survive on that, but they won't thrive. And to say that there are other things you can apply in summer to replace nitrogen is to say, well, we could give our kids a little vitamin pill at lunch and they'd be okay. It's a complex science. I've spent 35 years of my life involved in it, I have a PhD in agronomy, and I very much support water quality in this community. And I think the landscape model ordinance that you're proposing is the, is the best, is the best thing you can do. I apologize for being paid by my company. I apologize for being a gray-haired old man with bad handwriting. But I applaud you people for, for supporting this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And Clayton Ferreira. If there's anybody else that wants to speak, you need to get a card in right now.
Good afternoon to all of you. I've met quite a few of you before over the years. My name is Clayton Lewis Ferreira. I'm a biologist, I'm a distinguished alumni of Rollins College, and I live at 1808 Hammerlin Avenue, 32789, Winter Park, Florida. I'll be brief, I don't want to detract from anything that has already been said. I think that we've certainly heard a lot of impassioned pleas on both sides today. I do just merely want to point out some of the biological aspects that you may all not be aware of. Turf grass is not native to Florida. In fact, the majority of it is native to Europe. And the aspect of merely bringing it here as a plant that we're using to cover a large percentage of our yards is already in and of itself throwing off the balance that our lakes have evolved to be able to handle. Even a small amount of fertilizer on turf grass that is not absorbed by the grass going into the water has an incredibly damaging effect on a system. It merely has not evolved to be able to handle these types of things. Even more so than putting a fertilizer ordinance like what you've proposed, adapting it to have more regulation on it, what can even be more impactful than that is really looking at restoring native vegetated shorelines around the entirety of lakes that you find in Orlando. This will not only increase habitat of native animals, birds, amphibians, but it'll also absorb a great deal of the fertilizer, because the problem is, is that it's getting into the water, and there's aquatic plants there that are going to use this fertilizer, but they're not the plants that we want. There are the scummy algies, the cyanobacterias, the algies and plants that clog our waterways. All you have to do is restore beautiful native vegetation that will hold the soil, stop erosion, provide habitat for wildlife, and consume the excess nutrients that wind up going into the water. This is something that I haven't seen proposed before. Certainly, there are a multitude of lakes that utilize this, and there's a multitude of lakes that don't. But I just wanted to mention that it's something that I believe should be on your radar and has a great proponent to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was the last appearance card that I had. Is there anybody else that wanted to talk on this issue? Is there anybody else that wanted to talk on this issue? And you'll need to fill out a card after you finish speaking, okay? Are you speaking on this issue?
No.
Okay. After we complete this issue, we have an opportunity to go on any discussion. So you have a general appearance request form, and so I'll take you after we complete this, okay? Okay. I don't recall. What do we have, a motion before us?
It was Commissioner Ings, second by Sheehan.
Okay. So there is a motion before us. Discussion then among commissioners. Commissioner Sheehan.
Yeah, Mayor, you know, I don't want our stormwater permit to get in jeopardy, but I hate this missive from Tallahassee that we can't put restrictions in that we think are appropriate. I think that whenever I hear that, whenever I hear the state preemption of local authority, it just burns me up. And I think it's absurd because they're telling us that we have to take public comment. At the same time, the public comment that we're getting today to write a better ordinance, we can't use in an ordinance. I mean, it's the most ridiculous thing and hypocritical thing I've ever heard. And I wish you all would help me take that to Tallahassee because they're the ones that cause these ridiculous and stupid problems. There's a reason why they never send me to lobbying Tallahassee. I think they're a bunch of idiots, but anyway. I just get so upset with them because these state legislators, they don't listen to the people. They listen to lobbyists, and I think it's very frustrating. We listen to people. But there's a difficulty that we have here, though, because we have to abide by the rules that they've imposed upon us at the same time trying to do the right thing. So I think we can study this some more, but we might have to do some lobbying again in Tallahassee, which is very frustrating and has to get through committees and bills and all that kind of stuff. So I hope you understand that we don't have the kind of local authority, again, that we should have because of preemption by the state legislature, who frankly doesn't have a process that's very amenable to the public coming in and talking to them. And I understand that's why we get that at the local level, because you all can come and talk to us. You can come to City Hall. You can come to a meeting. And even though the young lady said, you know, "It's not very amenable to come down here," you know, we still get a great deal of public comment. We are probably, at the local level, a lot more available to you than your legislators. So we want to make ourselves available. And again, the difficulty for us is when we used to have meetings out in the public late at night, nobody ever came. And it costs us a lot of overtime to put staff out there to meetings that nobody ever came to. So at least if we have them here, we don't have to pay our staff overtime. But, you know, we try to make ourselves as available as we can. But I support looking into how we can put some more reasonable restrictions on it. I agree that, you know, actually, I wrote on here, I can tell when someone's a lobbyist. I wrote down lobbyist. Because I can tell when someone's saying that something's the gold standard, when it's a minimum standard that something's wrong, and we need to try to work on it. But I want to also temper your expectations that might be a longer period of working through this process because of this state oversight that frankly, you know, is troubling to us on a lot of levels, not just this issue, but many, many issues. So hopefully, we can work forward, move forward, make this better. And I wish we had more local authority to do the right thing today. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Lyman.
Mayor and council, I think Ms. Margery Hope spoke to my heart. I've lived on the lake for 42 years. But guess what? This is the first ordinance. I've been here 15 years, who've never had any kind of restriction on fertilizer. So I'm very happy about the standard. But you did say review and look into the possibility of a stricter ordinance for the future. And I think that is what makes sense to me right now. We know what we've got to do today, and we're going to do that. But the future gives us an opportunity, and I believe our attorney spoke to that, when he said that we've got to do this now, but we can hold these meetings. And to me, I was hoping, Cal, that maybe this meeting will be a part of the future discussion, that we can log in regarding input regarding this ordinance. We don't know where we'll go in the future, but it looks fair enough to me to say, "Let's look at it. Let's get with you. We get with..." I'd like to see what other people got to say who live around the lake and other people who are concerned about the environment. So I thank you for your comments. I thank everybody, but I think we've got to look to the future right now, and maybe if you continue to maybe get with Cal and see what we can do. Let's look at what you're proposing. That makes sense to me at this point. I am going to support the ordinance at this point because we've got a job to do, and that's our responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stewart, then Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. And Marge, thank you for your comments. One of the challenges that we have, and I think Commissioner Sheehan spoke to it, is that there are laws placed by the state imposed upon us, and we end up having to live under those circumstances. It's my understanding, and if I'm wrong, somebody correct me, without an ordinance on June 30th, then we're only living up to what the state of Florida has. We want something that's going to be a greater standard. There's nobody up here who does not want to do a greater standard. The challenge that we have is the timeframe and how we accomplish that task. Now, personally speaking, I've gone through this a couple of times, when you end up with 14 or 15 days of rain with a couple of tropical storms that came through. We had some wonderful algae blimps because our neighbors decided they were going to fertilize our lakes. And so it becomes one of those challenges that I learned very quickly, that we need to make sure that we address some of those issues. When I look at here, what I learned from Jim Hunt and several others that taught me well was that lakes are much more of a living organism. Some are sick, some are well, some are sicker than others. And I think that this science that we are embarking on is a relatively new science. We know there's some things that are common. We need to address those. And Mayor, I think we've all talked in terms of trying to put together some type of task force so that once this is approved and moved forward, we can begin to start looking and taking pieces of these and starting to go after some of these ordinances. I think what we have found, frankly, is that some of the other cities and some of the counties around the state were a little bit ahead of us in this process. And so we can get caught up pretty quickly. So I'm much like Commissioner Lyman. I'm going to be in favor of this ordinance here and also encourage the mayor to put together a task force of those stakeholders in our community so we can begin a regular review of this and look at regular science to make sure what we're doing is important. A couple of the issues that come to mind that I think we have to address, which I would like to see probably more countywide than this, is that we have probably about 12 to 15 lakes that are cross-jurisdictional. A challenge that we have is you have, Lake Susanna is an example, Lake Seuss, I should say, you have on that lake a shoreline that's city, a shoreline that's county, and a shoreline that's Winter Park. And so what you now have is that what ordinance do you affect at that area? It seems to me that what we ought to be doing is working closely with the county to come up with a countywide ordinance that we all can enforce internally, because I think that is important to what we're doing. While we have 95 lakes inside the city, it seems to be there's almost as much as 20 or 22 or 23 lakes where we share jurisdiction with somebody else. It would be inappropriate for us to put a greater burden on somebody who lives on the lake because they live in the city of Orlando and allow less of a burden of somebody else who lives in the county or in another city because of their jurisdiction. So it needs to be consistent from that standpoint. I think that's one of those issues I'd like to address in terms of how we do it. Not a little bit less of what we do and more that its consistency can be enforced by everybody across the board. So those are the issues that I'd like to see the task force look at. And Mayor, encourage you to set that up as soon as we possibly can and look towards a regular review of this. But in the meantime, I'm going to support this and satisfy our stormwater permit and then move forward as quickly as we can to accomplish greater controls in our community.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. I want to echo the words of my fellow commissioners, and I want to speak to you guys over there because I don't want you guys to think that we're the bad guys here. As the other commissioners were talking, we are pressed for a decision here. And it's a tough decision. I received some of the emails from some of fellow students. I graduated from the same university, so. And I called them back. They didn't send their phone numbers. I asked them for their phone numbers, and then I called them back, and I tried to explain. And they asked me to look into the ordinance from Tampa and from Naples. And we just don't have enough time to go ahead and turn this around and do it as you all wish this was supposed to be. But the good thing is that we're moving forward. We had nothing, so we are moving forward, and this is not the end of it. We can amend, we can tweak it, and I want you all to think like that, that this is not the end of it, and we will be more than happy to hear you all, to listen to you, to study this further. With that, I just want you all to know and understand that this is a decision. We are not only pressed for time, but we have to make a decision based on state's ruling. So please understand where we're coming from. We're going to be working with our community as we always do. We always reach out to our communities, and we're going to continue doing that. And now that we have young students, and as Ms. Trini said, pretty young students, involved in this, we want to go ahead and keep you guys involved, and we want you all to continue getting involved in these aspects of government. So with that being said, Mayor, thank you. I just want you all to understand that we are voting for this, but there's a reason, there's a valid reason for it. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, a couple of things. I'm a little embarrassed that we haven't had a fertilizer ordinance up to this point. So every speaker should have got up and said, "Thank you for at least adopting an ordinance. We'd like you to go further." But like a lot of things, a lot of things that are aesthetically pleasing are not environmentally pleasing. And we've actually switched over most of the grass that we have in city right-of-ways to less water-consuming grass. We have changed out a lot of the landscaping to be more sustainable. And we have an opportunity in the upcoming months as we look at our landscape code to make some modifications to try to start having our citizens understand a little bit more about sustainability and what that means in terms of the landscaping of homes. And unfortunately, here in Florida, we've had a history of everybody, well, in a lot of places in the country, everybody loving their giant green lawns, and that might not be the best thing for the environment. But today, we're here because our stormwater permit will expire without us being able to renew it if we don't have an ordinance. We're using the state's model ordinance, which we're able to adopt today and we're unable to adopt something more stringent than that. A couple of other thoughts. I wish you'd been here this morning to see the update on our Green Works Orlando Task Force that has a lot of good recommendations, one of which deals with the more sustainable landscaping. Another just random thought is it's John Ippele, rather than Ippele. He likes. And that's him over there, who you're talking about. And then the last thing, as part of that Green Works Orlando effort, we have on our web, Green Works website is something called a Mind Mixer. And you can submit ideas and everything that each one of you talked about today. I would go to Mind Mixer and put that in the record there so that it's considered by the Green Works Task Force. And then the last thing is if you have a good, strong message, you don't really need to attack people for being paid in their industry. That's kind of a, may not be a turnoff to others, but it's a turnoff to me that you delude your message by saying their message doesn't count because they're paid by their industry and they're here representing their industry. That just doesn't help your cause to make your presentation in that fashion. Okay. Anything else? But I do appreciate you being here and the passion that you displayed. Okay. Let's see. On favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye, those opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today. Thank you for tuning in. Thank you for being here in council chambers.